Testing, testing. Can I get a thumbs up in the back? Can you hear me? Awesome. Okay. I'm going to call this meeting to order and I'll invite you to stand as we reset the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Thank you. Any additions or... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent Sandson, would you please present the district points of pride?
Happy to do so this evening. Points of pride for November 2025. Band students, Carter Olson, Carter Gam, were selected to represent Alexandria in the Central Lakes Conference, honored jazz band, so we're excited for the two of them. Athletes recognized this past month as Central Lakes Conference Performers of the Week include Hannah Hoff, girls swimming and diving placed first in the 200 IM and the 100 Backstroke. Hannah continued that success, took second place in the 100 Backstroke at the CLC Section 8 AA Championship, which earned her a trip to the state swim and dive meet that took place this past weekend, and congrats to Hannah on that state opportunity. Both boys cross-country and girls cross-country were runners-up at sections and earned a trip to state cross-country meet, took place a few weeks ago at the University of Minnesota, where they each received academic gold state awards. Girls' team placed seventh at state and boys' team placed sixteenth. Both can be proud of their seasons. Cross-country All-State honors, Maddie Soderholm, Jake and Miller, Cedric Soderholm, Satori Hallby, and Quinn Hills. Congrats to those runners. Girls' tennis team took sixth place at the state tournament and earned Academic Gold State Award. Addison and Kennedy Stevenson placed sixth at state in the individual doubles tennis competition, so congrats to the two of them as well. First time ever our girls' team went to the state tournament, so that was exciting. Individual tennis honors included CLC All-Conference Kennedy Stevenson, Bentley Cryle, and Addison Stevenson. Honorable mention Samantha Whaley, Lily Ecken, and Lucy Witty. Academic All-State Cadence Simon and Hope Stark. And then we had a number of points of pride in boys soccer. Patrick Klecker named first-team All-State Boys Soccer by the Coaches Association. All-Conference honors Ethan Carlson, Camden Costers, who's here tonight for class, so congrats Camden. Julian Ramos and Patrick Klecker. And then All-Conference honorable mention Fran Rodriguez, Aden Zeller, and Bo Jones. And with the son on the team, I got to see a lot of their high-quality play from that crew. The football team became Section 5A Champions and advanced to the state tournament. Evan Zabel, Jack Morissette, both have been selected for the All-Star Football Game, which will take place, I think even next summer, maybe. I can't remember when that is, but congrats to Evan and Jack for that honor. Individual honors, as far as football, All-North District, a number of members of our Cardinal Team, Jack Morissette, Evan Zabel, Talon Witt, Thomas Henricks, Mason Witt, and Brody Berg. In the honorable mention category, Blake Shoal, Brendan Behrens, Brett Meyer, Aiden Schneiderhand, Spencer Kleindahl, Adrian Miles, Jackson Waltzine, and Connor Wang. So congrats to them. We had a number of Players of the Year in the North District. Offensive Player of the Year, Talon Witt. Defensive Player of the Year, Jack Morissette. Quarterback of the Year, Talon Witt. Wide Receiver of the Year, Thomas Henricks. Offensive Lineman of the Year, Evan Zabel. And Defensive Lineman of the Year, Jack Morissette. Ty Granning was named North Star District Assistant Football Coach of the Year. That concludes our points of pride for this evening.
Thank you. Would you also present the consent agenda, please?
Next up, consent agenda items. I'd ask for the... Okay, time out. Water, water break. I'd ask for the approval of minutes, a regular board meeting on October 20th and special meeting on November 10th. I'd ask for the approval of the payment of bills for October 25, 2025. I'd also ask for personnel recommendations, which are in your packet. Next up, approval of submission of grant applications, including one for art through Cardboard Cares. I'd ask for the approval of acceptance of grants, which we have a number. Super exciting. Pump Up Pride, which is at the Senex gas station, so just under a $1,500 donation, just from people getting gas, which they have to get anyway at some point, so that's from our Midtown Express, I think is the official name. So thanks to Alice and our partner over there. And we're able to have that contribute to our greenhouse lights as we continue to keep that, keep items growing in our greenhouse. Brideway Career Learning Center, $55,000 grant from our Minnesota opioid settlement. I know Assistant Principal Bob Brackey helps to work on that, along with Joe Herlbutt, and who was our dean over at Brideway. But a great opportunity to add some additional staff support there for Brideway. And then Discovery Middle School, you'll get to hear a little bit from them tonight. Nearly $3,000 grant from the Minnesota Historical Society to provide access for greater Minnesota students to access historical sites on a field trip. Ask for an extended field trip. Robotics team traveled to Brainerd for their NMRC conference. I'd ask for the approval of first reading of policies, and then also the approval of school district agreements, with some PSEO agreements in there, and then agreement with... We've worked on a belonging grant through the Alexandria Community Foundation, so we've got that in there as well. And then Horizon Public Health, thanks to the board of our work on the Minnesota Student Survey, so that's that Horizon Public Health grant in there, that will have an opportunity to do that survey in February of 2026, and thanks to our partners at Horizon Public Health for that opportunity. And that concludes our consent agenda for this evening.
So we've all had a chance to look at the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve as printed, or would someone like to pull something for further consideration?
Our motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Ellen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is reports and discussion items. We have Discovery Middle School. I'd like to invite Mr. Wanderlake and Mrs. Costers, as well as a bunch of students tonight, too, so.
Good evening, everybody. I am Troy Wanderlake, Principal of Discovery Middle School, and I am joined by Sarah Coster's Assistant Principal of Discovery Middle School, and Dani Anderson, who is our advisor for this group of students. You probably felt the energy when you walked in. And I am thankful to be joined by some very, very amazing students tonight. They are the advisors for our Unified Club, and Dani Anderson is the advisor of this group, and she is here to share more.
All right. So again, I'm Dani Anderson. This is my fourth year at Discovery Middle School, and I get the pleasure to kind of oversee our Unified Club, and I'm just really excited that all of these students are here to share with you the amazing things that they are doing. I really am the lucky one that gets to work with them every single day. So our Unified Club is a group where students with and without disabilities come together to work and build friendships, work on building inclusion and promoting inclusion within our building, and then just celebrating that everyone has different abilities and everyone is unique. It's important at Discovery Middle School because it helps create a welcoming community where all students will feel valued and appreciated and respected inside and outside the classroom. And then new this year is our elective, it's our Unified Advisors elective, and we opened it up last year for incoming eighth graders. And so they had to fill out a form that said, "I'm interested in this class," and it's really, really cool. We have, so it happens on both A and B days. We have four students that go into our center-based programs on our A days, and they really just work with the students in those center-based programs to help support them in their life skills, in their academics, in their social skills. And then we have three students that go in on our B days in our PE class, and they work with our students who receive DAP services, so developmental adaptive physical education. And they'll share more about that. But electives like this just really foster empathy, understanding, and inclusion in and outside of the classroom, in the hallways, in the lunchroom, and students really learn valuable skills such as patience, and communication, and teamwork. And then we just have stronger connections across different groups of students within our halls. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Okay. Hello, my name's Ella Shoal. I'm in the elective Unified Advisors. When I first signed up for this class, I didn't know, like, I didn't know what it would be like, but now that I've been in this class for a while, I've had many opportunities like learning sign language, learning about different disabilities, and how to advocate for people with disabilities. And now, and to me, unified means to be inclusive to people with disabilities inside and outside of school. And then, so in this first picture, I'm helping a student read, and then second picture, I was spending free time with a student, and then the last one is I was doing coffee with a bunch of students.
Okay. My name is Harper Medway. I'm in eighth grade. I've been part of Unified Club for three years at Discovery Middle School. Unified Club has helped me make new friends that I wouldn't have been able to meet and learn about disabilities. I'm also a part of Unified Advisors, which is a special eighth-grade elective class. In Unified Advisors, I get to learn important life skills like patience, teamwork, and empathy. So in the photos, I have a photo of everyone in Unified Club, and then I have some other photos of just me helping around in my Unified Advisors classes.
Hello, I'm Enzley McCabe, and I've been in Unified for a few months now. And my experience has been pretty awesome so far. It's been really, it's been a really cool experience for me, and I definitely feel like this is something I'd like to do more with in the future. Unified is a super important experience for people with and without different abilities alike. I personally encourage it. If someone is interested at all in it, they should definitely try it, because it's a really fun, awesome time. In this photo, you can see me in DAP, helping out another student with our correlation skills, so we had to put like teamwork games and stuff. For my elective, for my second elective this year for B days, I am in a PE class where I assist students with DAP services.
Hello, I'm Wyatt Barton. This is my first year being in Unified Club, and it has been a blast. Everyone is respectful, everyone has a fun time, it's just a really great space to be in. It is also my first year being in Unified Advisors. Unified Advisors is an elective class, and this class has been one of the best classes I've ever taken. I have had so much fun, and it makes me happy seeing people happy and having a fun time with everyone else. And then the photo shows we're doing a project in PE where we use a hula hoop and try to step through it and help to assist our other partners in it.
Hi, I'm Connor Person, and I've spent three years in Unified Club, and I've spent the first quarter in Unified Advisors. It has been a really fun experience, and it's changed the way I've looked on people who are differently abled, and being able to tell that most of the stereotypes that people make aren't true. And in this picture, I'm helping a kid build Legos in his free time.
Oh, I'm Becky Wood. I've been in Unified since sixth grade, and I've continued because I enjoy helping students that have different abilities than I do. Last school year, I was excited when I heard about this new elective class, and I immediately thought it sounded cool, so I signed up for it. Ever since, I've made a bunch of new friendships and connections, and met lots of cool peers. I'm also a part of the three students that go into the FIDE class on B days and help with the DAP services.
Hi, I'm Emmy, and I have been a member of the Unified Club for three years, and I have served as a part of the Unified Advisory Class for a little over a quarter. Unified has shaped me into helping be a more compassionate and understanding person, helping me spread positivity, not only in the classroom, but throughout the hallways as well. The Unified Club brings together friends and individuals of all abilities, creating an inclusive and supporting community. I know that everyone in this class has grown to be a positive influence all throughout our school, and I love this class because it has helped me connect with other people that aren't, that I usually wouldn't have connected with from these classes.
So at this time, if there are questions, we would invite anybody to learn more about Unified Club and Advisors.
So when does Unic- unify Club meet? And how many kids are in there? That picture of the group, it's a lot of kids.
Okay. So there's a lot of kids in Unified Club, like in the hundreds. It's a lot of kids that come together. The first and third Wednesdays of every month, but now because there's so many kids, because it's grown so much, we might be doing like every, like, splitting into different groups and then meeting on different Wednesdays, but it's normally every Wednesday during home base.
Thank you. That's pretty cool.
I'm curious, with choosing to be a Unified Advisor, what type of other electives did you choose, or did you decline doing because you chose Unified Advisors?
Okay, so this is one of our like semester-long classes, so we were given like arts and, because Piad isn't like usually one you can choose, but like arts and other things like medical class careers and like entrepreneurship classes, all these different like life skill classes, we had the option, and we chose Unified Advisors.
Thank you. So in next semester, or for the second half of the year, it'll be a new group in Unified Advisors? Yeah, thank you. That's great.
I just have to pick on Wyatt a little bit. So Wyatt, well done. And I don't, yeah, you can come up to the microphone now, I'll have to figure out. And Wyatt, the only reason I'm picking on you is because I was your mother's teacher back in Parker's Prairie, so I can see that, I think I coached her in volleyball maybe too, and so I can see that leadership potential that she demonstrated back then is in you as well. I don't know Wyatt, how about, I don't know, your, I don't know how to phrase this, but maybe your favorite activity that you've done so far this year as part of being a Unified Advisor?
Probably, probably just doing teamwork activities, just seeing how everyone helps each other during it.
Awesome. And then, well done on public speaking, all of you. Good work.
I'm curious if there's anybody who has thought about doing a career. I know in eighth grade, I mean, we're starting to talk about careers, right? Has this opened up any thoughts for you as far as special education or lots of careers?
Well, I've always wanted to do something that helps others, and I guess Unified Club and Advisors like just pushed me to like find a career that helps others.
I like what Harper says, I kind of agree. I mean, I started Unified Club first, and that just kind of really showed me like what I can do and how I can affect, and it just like gives me such a good feeling. So like occupational therapy and like physical therapy with all these pediatrics really like would be good, help with this.
Absolutely. Lots of helping careers. That's awesome. If you guys stick around later on, you're going to hear about some new courses that we're offering over at the high school. And one of them is Unified Music. So we have Unified PE, which is super popular over there, so check it out next year, I guess, right? For some of you? Are you all eighth graders? All of you are eighth graders? That's right. Yep.
I was just going to add too, there was a picture up there about our coffee cart, and so welcoming any and all of you to just come into the building. We do coffee cart on Fridays during first hour, or even just to come into our PE and our A-day Unified Advisors class. I know when I went and observed for the first time, I literally had tears leaving the room because I just felt so much joy at what was happening. I actually emailed Troy and Sarah right away, and I was like, "If you just need to pick me up ever, like this is, you need to go in there." Second hour into our center-based programs, because it's so amazing. But yeah, our coffee cart, we have students that partner up with our center-based programs, and they bring the coffee cart around to the staff, upstairs of the building and the downstairs of the building, and so they're helping students with their assistive technology, social skills, things like that. So it's really, really cool.
And as a non-coffee consumer, the coffee cart does have other items, a variety of items, that we've grown to expand based on staff feedback that one person really appreciates.
Were you, yes, we have bubblers. Bubblers are always, so coffee is free, bubblers are extra. Yep, there's a few other things. Hot chocolate.
So they're a very responsive organization.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming today. Next up, we have an enrollment update. So Rick?
Yeah. So board members and Maggie, I get to stay here, I think. I know we have, and I don't know if Maggie, you can pull this up on the screen, I don't... Board members, you'd have this, I think, in your packet, I believe. So just want to talk a little bit about enrollment, and I think from an overall perspective, and we've talked about it in some of our committees as well, that really 12 of our 13 targets, at least what we expected, hit the mark, or within, I think, within five students plus or minus, which is great. One that was off from an estimation was in kindergarten, and I think we'll continue to monitor the data that we have. I know our principals talked about a number of holdbacks, so I don't think that's surprising in today's world. I know at one point in the history of the world, if you had a summer birthday and you were ready to go to school by September 1st, people went, and nowadays, I think, parents continue to monitor and navigate that as, and what makes sense for their kid and their family, which is, those are important parent decisions. So we'll continue to monitor that and see if that continues to be a trend going forward. Outside of that, you know, as far as from a budget projection standpoint, really kindergarten was a spot where we missed the mark, and know that as we continue to monitor some of those pieces from a budget standpoint, you know, I think, know that as we get to a revised budget here this winter, and how does that impact us going forward. Continuously really strong numbers at the high school level. Middle school as well is pretty darn close to our projections, so you know, I think continuing to monitor that as we go forward. And I know one thing that we continue to experience, and I think important for the board to monitor and gauge, as we will do so on the administrative side, is how big is that graduating class? Because we continue to have large groups in that high school. And then, how do you balance that with incoming kindergarteners, and how that has an impact on the financial sector? From an enrollment and recruiting standpoint, I think, you know, the work that our high school has done and middle school continues to create those student leadership opportunities. I know you've had a chance to see some of the ideas coming out of Carlos Elementary, Milton and Science Magnet, Brideway. How do we continue to create school choice options within our school district? And appreciate the board's support over that in the last number of years, and how might we continue to do that in a school choice competitive landscape? We've also had a good partnership with our, and that'll continue tomorrow morning, by the way, Personnel Committee, reminder, 6:00 AM, teacher negotiations tomorrow morning, so. But partnership with our union about how do we continue to create experiences that are strong for kids. Kindergarten camp was one of those experiences this year where our kindergarten families had a chance to start the year off on a positive foot, getting to know their teachers, their peers, some of those routines. How do we continue to provide some of that programming going forward? You'll see some of the new courses coming forward as well as we go through the next couple of months, both at, particularly at the high school. Again, how do we be responsive? We had a great champions committee meeting today about what's the future. I don't know how many schools in the country are talking about a supply chain pathway for kids and transportation with our college transportation center. So Trish and Chad, thanks for leading that part, along with our staff and our business partners. How do we continue to fill those voids? But from an enrollment standpoint, really, I think, continuing to make sure that we're providing quality experiences for kids, being responsive for our families, creating those partnerships. I love Dani's piece about how do we continue to get parents into our schools and volunteering, and you know, I think all those pieces are key as from an enrollment retention standpoint. We know the data over time is once our retention rates are really high, how do we make sure we get people in the door to start? And that starts in kindergarten with some of our recruiting and enrollment. I know Jill will be meeting with our principals tomorrow around some of that work from a kindergarten standpoint, and how do we use different media methods to continue to get that message out? Questions on enrollment?
I understand across the state demographically, the class sizes are just naturally getting smaller also. Is that correct?
Yeah. The state demographer, and I know Sean, for example, is at the MREA, the Minnesota Rural Education Association Conference tonight, and the state demographer has had a chance to present. It's actually really interesting data, to your point, Laura. in today's world, I know at one point in the history of the world, if you had a summer birthday and you were ready to go to school by September 1st, people went, and nowadays, I think, parents continue to monitor and navigate that as, as, and what's, what makes sense for their kid and their family, which is, those are important parent decisions, so we'll continue to monitor that and see if that continues to be a trend going forward. Outside of that, you know, as far as from a budget projection standpoint, really kindergarten was a spot where we missed the mark and, and know that as we continue to monitor some of those pieces from a budget standpoint, you know, I think, know that as we get to a revised budget here this winter and, and how does that impact us going forward, continuously really strong numbers at the, at the high school level, middle school as well is pretty darn close to our projections, so you know, I think continuing to monitor that as we, as we go forward, and I know one thing that, that, that we continue to experience and I think important for the board to monitor and gauge as we will do so on the administrative side is, is how big is that graduating class, because we continue to have large groups in that high school, and then how do you balance that with incoming kindergarteners and, and how that has an impact on the financial sector. From an enrollment and recruiting standpoint, I think, you know, the work that our high school has done and, and middle school continues to create those student leadership opportunities, I know you've had a chance to see some of the ideas coming out of Carlos Elementary, Miltonon Science Magnet, Bridgeway, how do we continue to create school choice options within our school district, and appreciated the board's support over that in the last number of years, and how might we continue to do that in a school choice competitive landscape? We've also had a good partnership with our, and that'll continue tomorrow morning, by the way, Personnel Committee, my reminder, 6:00 AM, teacher negotiations tomorrow morning, so, but partnership with our union about how do we continue to create experiences that are strong for kids, kindergarten camp was one of those experiences this year where our kindergarten families had a chance to start the year off on, on a positive foot, getting to know their teachers, their peers, some of those routines, how do we continue to provide some of that programming going forward? You'll see some of the new courses coming forward as well, as we go through the, the next couple of months, both at, particularly at the high school, again, how do we be responsive? We had a great Champions Committee meeting today about what's the future, I don't know how many schools in the country are talking about a supply chain pathway for kids and transportation with our, our college transportation center, so Trish and Chad, thanks for leading that part, along with our staff and our business partners, how do we continue to fill those voids? But from an enrollment standpoint, really, I think, continuing to make sure that we're providing quality experiences for kids, being responsive for our families, creating those partnerships, I love Danny's piece about how do we continue to, to get parents into our schools and volunteering and, and, you know, I think all those pieces are key as from an enrollment retention standpoint, we know the data over time is once our retention rates are really high, how do we make sure we, we get people in the door to start, and that starts in kindergarten with some of our recruiting and enrollment, I know Jill will be meeting with our principals tomorrow around some of that work from a kindergarten standpoint, and how do we use different media methods to continue to get that message out? Questions, questions on enrollment?
I understand across the state demographically, this, the class sizes are just naturally getting smaller also, is that correct?
Yeah, the state demographer, and I know Sean, for example, is at the MREA, the Minnesota Rural Education Association Conference tonight, and the state demographer has had a chance to present, it's actually really interesting data, to your point Laura, and I can't remember the exact numbers, but there's something like 42,017-year-olds in the state of Minnesota and there's like 30,000 five-year-olds, and so, and I think you can see some of that conversation happening on an international level, I think Japan, Scandinavia, you know, and I, I think how do we, you know, even from a national standpoint, I think some of those conversations happen, even federal government, Minnesota, how do you make places family-friendly, and really, when it comes to childcare, housing, childcare and housing in particular, how do you make it affordable for families and incentivize, you know, you know, families really in some, in some regard?
Making sure we can attract those smaller number of kids to our, yeah.
Yep.
On Wednesday, Sean and I will be in St. Paul for the Education Policy Fellowship, and we're going to hear from the state demographer Wednesday night in St. Paul, so we'll have even more about that.
I will be excited for you to report on that, hopefully next month.
Uh huh, but also, you know, we are prized of the projections and enrollment throughout the summer, and well, maybe we start in the spring, I guess, tracking it numbers because it affects the budget, and so of course, on a budget aspect, it is concerning to have smaller numbers as you start and think about that going into the school year, but on a flipside thought, I was at Open House at Lincoln, and so that'd be late August, and I said to one of the kindergarten teachers, we're just visiting my child's former kindergarten teacher and said, oh, what do you think of the smaller class sizes this year? She said, well, I told my principal, very happily, this is a really appropriate kindergarten class size, and I thought, well, that makes me feel a lot better, which is true, right? I think they're enjoying that aspect of engagement and space in the room and things, so anyway, doesn't, doesn't remove our thoughts about finances and the impact there, but I thought that one made me smile and still does, so I thought I'd share it.
And I, and I probably know some, I do know all, all those kindergarten teachers and, and, you know, I think, and from a macro level, and Laura, thanks for that, that data point around the demographer, and it'll be interesting to hear Maureen and Sean bring some, some of that data back as well, but in the end, right, to, to provide the information, the data, the experiences for kids that, that, and again, you saw some of that work that we've really done over the last three years, how do we continue to grow student leadership opportunities, we've had some of that work in our elementary schools as well, we saw some of that from Voyager and Carlos, and, and how do we continue to expand those opportunities so kids can, can really love coming to school, and you saw some of that from some of our middle schoolers here tonight. You know, the other piece too, I think as we go forward, continuing to evaluate, open enrollment, evaluate online options and the impacts there, you know, at this point, we haven't, we haven't tackled an online option, at least for us internally, you know, with vigor like other districts have, and that'll be another conversation, I think, as we move forward as a board and talk about revenue and expenditures, and how does that, how does that impact us going forward? But you can't make informed decisions without the data, so thanks to, I know, board members for your conversation and committees as well as around our enrollment data and projections, and, and wanted to share that with our community as well.
Thank you, I'd like to invite Trish Peria, she's going to present an overview of the 24-25 Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness, or CACR, report summary.
Thank you, I'm excited to be here to present this tonight, for many of you on the board, you probably recognize this report as World's Best Workforce, and now it's Comprehensive Achievement and Readiness Report, or better known as CACR, interesting name, this is just a highlight, again, we're in, in draft form, and this actually was presented tonight at our Curriculum Advisory Committee, and there's a few suggestions that we'll make, and I'll talk with Jill, and I want to thank Jill too for her hard work in working with me on, on this as well, and so to highlight our, our CACR report, again, this focuses on our five different goals, and we'll go through those goals really quickly, and also really the importance of CACR is to look at student achievement as well as giving them engaging curriculum as well as looking at what life looks like for them after graduation, so preparing them for post-secondary, whatever that may, may look like in their future. So again, our report, we have our Curriculum Advisory Council, you can see the members today at Curriculum Advisory, there was a question about my name being as part of the committee from 24 to 25, and you can see Darcy's name, and I had to remind people, I wasn't here last year, but thanks for thinking of me, so my name will be there next year, and you can see the different topics that were covered last year as Curriculum Advisory Council, and then finally, our staff development goals, looking at our different goals, number one is school readiness, and this comes from Lynn's team, so thanks to Lynn and her team for creating this, and our goal, we met our goal, our original goal was 89% of our students enrolled in our preschool programs would have proficient emergent reading skills as identified by our early childhood indicators of progress, our L4 motivation and engagement, so 91% of our students met that goal, and you can also see on the bottom, and throughout the report, you'll see some facts regarding our district. Our second goal is closing the achievement gap, and I should have mentioned with our CACR goals, this is a report that's required through MDE, so the goals are, are set for us, so the five goals are there, we can decide what the, the measurement of the goal is, but those goals are always going to stay the same, so when I talk about 25-26, you'll see a similarity then with the five goals that I'm talking about this evening, so you'll see with our achievement gap, we're looking to decrease the gap between our free and reduced and, free and reduced lunch students and those that are non, and the goal was to decrease that achievement gap by 1%, and you'll notice that in our reading, that we were successful in that goal by 2.5%, and unfortunately, in math, we were close, it was a 0.86%, and those are numbers that you just can't inflate, so that was just a 0.86%. And then on the bottom, it's important that we communicate to the community the different strategies that we use, and again, this is just a highlight, there's so many more things that happened in the classroom throughout the district that we share at different times, but this is again, just a highlight of those strategies. Goal three, we focus on college and career readiness, and our goal was 95% of the class of 2025 be college and career readiness, and you can see that there's a number of different measurements that students can attain, and we met that goal, so 95% of our students attained that goal, and, and one conversation that we had at Curriculum Advisory is the number of students, and you can see on, on the bottom of one of the career and college readiness achievement measurements, the successful attainment of completing a certification or licensure, and we've highlighted that, and we've had 80 students that earned industry certifications, I think that's just really impressive, and I'm glad that Curriculum Advisory had conversation around that as well. And then finally, or excuse me, our second to last goal is Goal Four, our graduation rate, and again, we always have a very high graduation rate, 95.2% of our students, and then we've got some facts again about the class of 2025, and again, just strategies implemented to meet the goals. And our last goal, Goal Five, this is a new goal, if you remember back with World's Best Workforce, it was learning well by grade three, and we don't have that goal anymore, we expect that all students read, read well at each grade level, so a new goal is preparing students to be lifelong learners, and our goal focuses on our students that are seniors that present their portfolio, their digital portfolio to the community, and I'm happy to report that we had 100% of students that met that goal, so all of our students last year presented their digital portfolios, and from what I understand, that's a really powerful moment in time, not only for the student, for, for those people that are involved in their education journey, and the community members that have the opportunity to hear students talk about their educational journey, and then finally, you'll see our strategic direction as well as part of, of the report, and again, we'll have some small suggestions, if you notice back on, we're consistent with Goal Met, and one of the, one of the recommendations from Curriculum Advisory is to add Goal Met on each of those yellow boxes when we met the goal, so I think that's a great idea Jill, and we'll add that tomorrow morning, so some really good feedback from the committee tonight.
Any questions? Silence.
I would just have some feedback or just some suggestions with Goal Two, so I think it's just, it's written, just kind of awkward there, I guess, because we, it's really a decrease, and it says decrease at, at the end of that, but it's really a decrease of 2.5%, a decrease of 0.86%, and I think it's just written, just I think, it could be cleaned up a bit.
Thanks for the feedback.
And I'm curious too, can you provide some context to that too as well, I mean, what is our, what is the gap between free and reduced and general population for both of those?
It's about 20%.
Okay.
Roughly.
Yeah.
I, speaking of Goal Tool, I was excited that we more than doubled the, what we wanted to achieve, which is amazing, and it makes me remember, Michelle, just a few months ago, you were talking about less students needing intervention for reading, and so I just wanted, do you, can you remind me how long we've been on the new reading curriculum? Is it, is this our second year or?
The third year.
The third year, okay, I really feel like I'm seeing that impact, so it's really exciting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just tells you how time flies, holy cow, no, that's, that's third year, yep, no, it's good observation, and, and thanks to board members, community members, leadership team, right, this is a work in progress, so part of that is why we bring this here in this phase, so we can have feedback and, and engagement around it.
The other part of the report was civic engagement, does that have to do with the new standards, and is that in here, or is that just?
No.
Okay.
And I, I think part of that is that lifelong learner piece.
Oh, that's what that means.
So that, and we, and I had a chance, I attended Curriculum Advisory Council just for the beginning tonight, and we've got a junior and a senior student that serve on that committee, and, you know, even, we talked a little bit about the Capital Projects Levy and, and gathered some feedback from, from that group, and, and I think, you know, as we try to prepare people for a world where, and I think the, clearly our media options were fewer, but maybe more consistent, and whether that's good or bad, probably to be determined still in the world, and, and how do we then, we talked about a Capital Projects Levy, how do we communicate that as a school district effectively when there's so many places to gather that data and really try to be an informed voter, so I know, you know, as you think about that civic readiness piece, how do you make sure that our young people have that inspiration to be engaged in their democracy, right, and participate, and that's part of that, that work, and, and I know that they're required to take a class in government, they're required to take class in economics, of course, all their history pieces, but how do you carry that with you going forward, and that's part of our work around them reflecting around their learning and their course-taking behavior, and I was reading something about permitting, right, and, and how the permitting rules in every community can be different, but how the business owners, the people who are in the carpentry field, impact and can give input into cities and counties on some of that work, and that's, you know, how do, how do we blend the work that people do with policy and law, so hopefully we're having a chance to inspire some of that through some of that reflection on how their school experience went, and how does that prepare them for the next step in their, their journey? And maybe Laura, to your point, part of it from the state level is when, when we ask for, "Help us define civic readiness," that's a local decision, okay, we'll go ahead and define that then in some fashion, and, you know, continuing to prepare young people to consume information and make an informed decision going out there, but there's not a consistent definition of that across the state, and I'm, again, good or bad, right or wrong, I'm fine with it local.
Yeah.
I appreciate the work that our community does to support our kids, so, but doesn't, doesn't give a ton of clarity however.
Yeah, well, thank you for that.
Ellen?
I'm just curious, has the date been set for the date for the portfolio presentations?
Not that I know of, maybe Rick, do you know?
I do know, it is on the last two-hour late start, now, what that date is, I can see you're getting your pen out, I'll bring that up in my administrative report, that'll give me time to dig it up.
That, that, that is a day of, that you'll look forward to.
Yes, I'm really excited.
Okay, so.
And we have some seniors back there who are also getting excited, I can tell.
All right, well, maybe they'll be in one of my groups, that's good.
Okay, so you are looking for us to accept this report, right?
I am, please.
Yeah, is there someone who would like to carry that motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. So, leading on to CACR in 2025, 2026, to give the board some information about our work thus far, as I mentioned, you'll, you'll notice again, goals are very, very similar, and I think this is important because we want a continuation of good work, and you saw last year in our CACR report, it was 89% that we identified with school readiness, this year we increased the goal to 90%, and again, our focus is on engagement. Closing the achievement gap, again, you'll see that 1% decrease between non-free and reduced and free and reduced students, both in reading and for math. Goal Three, the college and career readiness, if you recall, in last year's report, it was at 95%, this year, we're looking at a 97% or 97% of the class of 2025 will attain one of those below-listed measures, and Goal Four is our graduation rate, again, we have a really high graduation rate, so we're looking for improvement from 95.2% to 96%. And Goal Five has been really interesting, this is our third change, and this is new from tonight, and this is the power, I think, of committee work, and being able to work through our committees to really gain feedback from our different stakeholders, and so originally, when we talked about this goal, we talked about 85%, because you noticed from last Trish's CACR, it was 100%, it went to our first committee meeting, and the committee said, "I think we can do better, and we're going to align more into the 90%", so then we updated to 90%, and this was presented to our Curriculum Advisory Committee, and they looked at it and said, "Digital portfolios are really part of our culture, and it is part of our pride, we think it should be higher," and so they suggested 95%. And it's great when you look around the table and everyone is nodding and no one's going like, ooh, not really sure, so we'll, I'll change this tomorrow morning, or maybe when I'm sitting back here, when I've got a couple seconds, and it'll be 95%, so it will be a change, and I'm just really pleased and thankful for people pushing that, like pushing it to be better, so I think that's really great work on, on our teams.
Awesome, I think that actually affirms some of the discussion that we had as well.
Yes, yeah, it started in Curriculum Policy and then Curriculum Advisory Council said 95%.
Good.
So, great feedback from that committee tonight.
Now, what Trish is going to be invited to participate in is tracking down the four young people who are maybe resistant to this opportunity, and we will get to know them by name, and we'll, we'll work with them on rescheduling, and, and that is good work, though, right?
Absolutely.
That is the work that our staff at the high school have done the last couple of years to try to get that number to 100, I just want all of you to know that is not an easy task, and yet, and our seniors here know this too, they've, they've got some students that probably could present their portfolio tomorrow, who are their peers, there's also peers that maybe haven't even started one, and maybe, I won't accuse anybody back there of any of that, but, you know, that, that's part of that is, I think once kids complete it- But, you know, that's part of that is, I think, once kids complete it, they're like, "Wow, that was a powerful, powerful experience." How do we help tell that story, you know, going forward? But yeah, I again, would appreciate those external pushes in our expectations.
That's good.
Any questions just about moving forward with 2025, 2026? CACR, before we get to talk about high school course changes.
I had one question. Back to number two goal. And this is something I don't need a response to tonight. How would our numbers, as far as the gaps, compared to other regional schools in Minnesota? And I think that's probably a more fair comparison than statewide or what have you. So I don't need that answer tonight, but I'd be curious about that at some point in the future.
Great. So I'm excited to talk about this work as well. And I really want to first thank Chad and his team for being creative, being responsive, and really looking at the needs of our students. And what a great night to present this information, especially after hearing about a new class at the middle school and the impact that classes have on students. So looking at some of our high school course changes you heard from Unified and I think Angie, you had alluded to Unified Music. And that will be a new course offered at the high school next year. And again, the purpose really is to provide an inclusive, performance-based course that's going to bring together our general ed students and students that receive special education services. And this will be open to all students. So I'm excited for that. And especially seeing how many students are interested and participate at Unified in the middle school. I would imagine that this will be a very popular course for students to take advantage of. The second class is advanced photography. We currently have photography, but this expands our photography program. And what the course will do, it will address a growing student interest in digital media, visual storytelling, as well as creative technology. The third class is exploring acting and performing arts. And this really just expands the elements of the theater. So it's not just acting. It's looking at really a broad range of all the components of theater, whether that would be stage production or working in the sound or the tech portion of the theater. And then beyond the curtain, behind the scenes exploration. And again, this is a class that allows for students who don't want to be performers, but they can also take the opportunity then to learn what they can contribute to the theater. The next class is tool safety and first aid. And this integrates the OSHA standards, and I have to read this because I need to get this right, and adopts the 29 CFR 1910 and 1926 standards. So it ensures compliance with Minnesota academic standards for career and technical education. And this is also in partnership with ATCC. And so students, this is a pathway class for students that attend ATCC. That credit will be taken care of. But what I also find is very valuable about offering this class in the high school is that this is a mandatory workforce class. So students that enter right into a trade this class that they need and they'll have this completed. So I think that's just a great opportunity for students. The next class is car care. And I apologize for the typo. Oh, no, that's right. It was in the last one, it was incorrect in curriculum advisory. So car care, advanced auto mechanics. And again, this is a partnership class with Chris Chisholm. And I also think that this is an exciting opportunity for our students, especially with our transportation center at ATCC. So this will also be another pathway class for students. Some of the classes that we're looking, these are the classes that we're looking at discontinuing, so dropping from the course registration book. The first one is animation. And we've had low enrollment numbers in this particular class. And what instructors, as part of the high school team, had talked about is that the content in animation can be incorporated into other digital art classes. So I think that's really important, that we may not have a class, but students will still be able to have an experience in a different class with animation. Introduction to networking. We've also had low enrollment numbers. And again, our instructors were adding content to computer hardware and operating systems. So again, that they're not losing the experience. It'll just be in a different class for students. Our AP Lit and Composition class, we have not run that class in quite a few years, from what I understand. And what's really popular is we offer dual enrollment for college credit. So our students are navigating towards the dual enrollment rather than taking the AP class. 3D animated movie making, that was on a rotation class. And again, we've just had low enrollment. So it's never, I don't think it's been taught for quite a few years. So again, we're not going to offer that class next year. Foundations in manufacturing and advanced robotics. I'm going to talk about those two classes in tandem. And both of the courses had many skills and areas that overlapped. And so the teacher thought that it would be best if we taught those skills in conjunction with one another. So what the class, I didn't mention mechatronics. And I did that on purpose because that, foundations in manufacturing, advanced robotics, will be combined into mechatronics. And interesting enough, when I was presenting this information to our curriculum advisory committee, mechatronics is also a pathway class because it's offered at ATCC. But it's very much so a need in our community as well. So it's incorporating both the mechanic side and the electrical side together. And I heard a lot more, but quite honestly, that was above what I understood. So I'm like, I'm really happy that you're telling me this and I'm excited to share that. And then economics and government, we will not offer that course online as well. In terms of the middle school, from what I understand is last year, there was significant changes. And it was really neat to hear the kids talk about all the different elective opportunities that they have as middle school students. But for this coming next year, what the recommendation was is just a change in name for orchestra to cameretta orchestra, which I believe means concert.
Yeah, or chamber.
Or chamber, chamber orchestra. So we learned that as well. So those are the course changes, both from the high school and from the middle school.
So this is the first reading?
This is the first reading.
Is there any questions for Trish? Or are we ready to approve the first reading of the course changes?
I don't have any questions. We went through this also in curriculum policy I filled in. But I just wanted to mention that I think the car care, working together with that for advanced auto mechanics is really neat because not only is it a skill that so many students have an interest in and leads into career opportunities, but also has that service element when connecting with car care. And so you're having that piece of compassion and servitude enveloped with it, which I think is a really great opportunity together.
Some civic engagement, right? Yeah. I think there was some comments too at the champion committee today about just having the skill set, right? You know, those skills of fixing your own car and those kinds of things have kind of gone by the wayside. And it really provides some skills for some kids along with a career path as well. So, yeah, I agree. Is there a motion to approve their first reading?
I move to approve this course changes for the high school.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then DMS course changes? Keep you.
Yeah, we couldn't do that in a two. Okay, Maggie shaking her head. So we got to do DMS as a separate item, even though there's only one name change for discovery.
Yep.
I move we approve the name change for DMS.
Okay. No second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. And then on to combining polling places. So this is an annual resolution that we make?
Yes, so let me pull that up. So in order to comply with statutory obligations, by resolution, any changes to combine polling places for standalone school district elections, locations of these combined polling places have been limited. So it asks for the administration recommends the board adopt the resolution combining polling places should the need arise.
Okay. Is there a motion to?
I'll move that we combine.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And then our last item on the action is accepting the letter of resignation.
Yeah, I would ask for the board to accept Elizabeth Paul's letter of resignation. She submitted a letter of resignation here last week. And I want to say thank you to her for her service on the board. And would ask for the board to accept her letter of resignation.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll move to accept.
Thank you. No second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. So that brings along next steps.
Yeah. So if we could take a minute and had a chance to share in the weekly update process and would welcome feedback from board members from a process standpoint. You know, obviously, people interested. And a little background, so two years, board would appoint somebody through November of '26. And November of '26, there would be an election for the remaining two years of this seat, this board seat.
And this is all in statute?
This is all in statute, yes. Yeah, this is pretty clear. And that's why even the term for being appointed, it's actually until we certify the election results in November. And then that person would be seated really at that time, is my understanding. And I know Maggie, you've done some reading about this too. So it's not even really through the calendar year. It's until that election is certified. And then whoever wins that election would be a board member at that time and then fill out the remaining years of that term. I think, you know, from a board standpoint, if people are interested in that and we'd have processes and Jill would support us on the communication side as well and updating the website and things of that nature. And then providing time for people to express interest. Now, the other challenge is, I do think, you know, I think that, because there's also a 30-day comment period, once the board decides to appoint somebody. And so really, the earliest, I think we'd have somebody be able to attend, given all those timelines, would be the end of January, at our regular board meeting at the end of January, given that process. So shared some ideas in our weekly update and really that there'd be, and really through the next couple of weeks, people could, you know, express interest. Maybe have, I think, and again, not that this has happened frequently, but this has happened before on the board. Have the personnel committee review those applications of interest. Make a recommendation to the full board on that practice. So we'll throw those ideas out there as a place to start conversation and welcome other thoughts.
Actually, I thought you had great ideas there. I know I had talked with a couple on the board here about same kind of process as far as submitting a letter of interest. I feel that maybe some more questions that you had. I felt that those would give us a little more information as well. I didn't put dates to it, but I liked how you laid it out because it gives us opportunity to get those letters of interest along with their answers to some basic questions. And then putting it to personnel and having them make a recommendation for the board. And then being able to point it at our next meeting.
And this has been done, I think, as Julie Kritz used to say, from soup to nuts across the state. So the timelines are clearly delineated. The how this happens, not so much. And so trying to, again, have some community engagement around that, have a chance for people to express interest, I think would be important from a public standpoint as a public school district. So would welcome other thoughts and ideas.
I would like to maybe suggest we take it out of the personnel committee and give other people opportunity. I mean, I'd like to see who's applying and their answers and.
Yeah, I think that's an option to go forward. And we wouldn't have, I mean, the nice part is we could put the application out there and then decide how we process those, if that's, board members want to come in and read through those, do a rank order of some sort. I mean, there's multiple ways that, I mean, from a hiring, when I think about from a hiring.
Right.
Not that we're hiring, but we kind of are hiring, right?
Yeah.
From a hiring standpoint, there's, I mean, I don't think that would be a challenge per se. And that way, all board members get to have some input. Obviously, if we wanted to have a work session, we could do that as well. So I think we've got options in front of us. And again, if there was one way that every school district said, "This is the way we should do it," we'd probably do it that way. That hasn't been the case, at least in my research. And I know Maggie did a little research as well and maybe some of you as well. But I think we're open to see how do we garner that input and from our board.
I like your idea of ranking. I like, because it gives everybody an opportunity to give input and we're not debating people, which I think is good for our.
Right, that can be challenging. And I think, you know, having done quite a bit of hiring, at least there's a principal or in this role, that's not an uncommon practice. And I think some of you have served in, maybe even for the superintendent position, right? That probably has some type of quantitative data that helps to identify strengths and weaknesses of candidates, which again, I think is, at least in my experience, has been good on the hiring side of the world.
So I'm going to take the liberty to offer a motion. I think that this is an important enough process that we need to have something on record.
And do we need a motion, I guess? We don't need a motion? Is it okay to have a motion, I guess? There we go.
I will take that as permission.
And notice the guy you employ is not going to counter that necessarily unless it was.
Good choice.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to ramble a little bit here and then I think we'll have a framework after I get done rambling, okay? So I like the outline that was provided to us in the weekly update, okay? I think that's, it's important that the decisions be made in a timely fashion, but yet I think that timelines outlined provide the opportunities for the process to work. And I too would make as part of the motion that we use the ranking process that all of us board members read the letters that are submitted by the people that are interested. And then we submit or do a ranking. I've been part of that process many times here and it works. It really works quite well. And so with that, I'll frame the motion for Maggie, okay? I move that we proceed to fill the vacancy created by the resignation in the, using the outline that was presented to us in the weekly update with the addition that there be an opportunity for all the board members to review the letters of interest and to rank them, one through whatever the number might be.
Can I add a thought or potential amendment to your motion?
Sure.
I'm interested in having at least an opportunity or that we discuss it, that we may choose to interview candidates. I, you know, of course, we don't know who's going to apply, right? So we could have two people and we all know them. But we could have four people that none of us know. And so I'd like to at least have it in maybe their awareness that if they're submitting an application, that they, if you all agree, to having an interview, that they know that we may be inviting candidates to interview. And in that case, And in that case, because there are six of us board members, we'd likely need to do a group of three board members or we could do two separate interviews that are a group of three in a group of three. Probably just back to back.
I, I am amendable to that, but I think we ought to, as part of the motion, have a, a definition around that. So groups of three.
So what are your thoughts on it?
Well, I think, I think that, I guess, how do we get to the interview process? Are we going to interview everybody or are we going to interview those individuals that raise to, that rise to the top of the ranking?
Well, that's where the data comes in. So typically, when you do those rank order experiences, you sometimes end up with one clear candidate. Sometimes you end up with two that are tied or you might end up with three that are in the ballpark and three that, you know, if everybody says these three are four, five and six, if there's six people that apply, right? These, the four, five and six are all the same. The one, two and threes are intermixed. Well, then you might interview three people and, and in that, in that scenario, what, at least as, as I think about board efficiency and opportunity is maybe we create two, three groups of two and we rotate through them, you know, in whatever 20, 30-minute interviews where you each have four or five questions that, that we ask. You all ask the same question, but you rotate candidates through the process in order to be efficient with people's time, right? Trying to get the six of your schedules to match is no easy feat. So I do think, you know, and I appreciate a little flexibility in the backend because I think all those points are really well thought out about. You want to make a, an, an informed decision with the most data possible. And I think both the quantitative data, because you really can do the same thing process-wise after those interviews as you rank order and see if we have a consensus about where that should, should be.
So, so maybe not knowing how many people are going to show an interest, maybe we know that we are going to do a rank order and we have the interest in doing interviews. At this point, we just can't describe how that might look. We would trust our leadership to guide us in that.
I'd, I'd be happy, once the data is complete, I think we have a path forward. Once we, once you all have a chance to rank order, I think the path forward is, is, can be easily accomplished or replicated based on other experiences, at least in my hiring career.
So, so to clean up the motion perhaps, we're going to follow the timelines that were established and presented to us in the weekly update. And, and that was the result of some experiences some other school districts had in the state. So, so we understand it has a, it's, it's been tested and it, it worked. So we're going to follow those guidelines and we're going to include in there rank ordering of the candidates with interviews. That, that work?
Is it potential for interviews though? Or just, I mean, we talked about maybe having the flexibility to add an interview, right?
I think, I think we'll, we'll have interviewing as part of the process and it'll be, it to be determined, do we interview all 16 or do we interview four? Or, or what, what makes sense?
We need to push back our timelines then, actually, because I'm thinking, I mean, I know that we talked about having, I don't have the dates in front of me, but.
So the date is?
December 5th, they'd be due, right? And then our committee meetings are the next week. And our board meeting would be the following week. I just think it's too tight if we're trying to get timelines together for just us.
We would likely need to create, so, so good observation. It would probably mean that Monday of the committee week, which is Monday, December?
8th.
8th, is that we'd reserve some time for board, you know, if that's 90 minutes to do some type of interview roundtable. And, and for candidates to know, because I appreciate your timeline piece, for candidates or people that are interested to know, they should also reserve that timeframe. If that's from 5:00 to 6:30 or 5:30 to 7:00 on Monday.
Thanks.
Yeah.
We, we would have though access to reading their, their letters of interest prior to that. Is that correct?
If their applications are completed prior to the 5th.
Yeah, we ask them to sit by the 5th.
Which?
Which, and again, people leaning into public service doesn't seem to be, you know, it's not hundreds at a time typically in today's world, given the hard work that, that you all do. So I wouldn't anticipate us being overrun with applications, but I do think important then, then, then for board members, you'd have to have some time to read and digest some of that data. And I guess I want to, you know, the other thing I'd say is maybe then the applications are due December 3rd, Wednesday. That gives you Thursday, Friday to read and rank, if you will. Otherwise, that puts a little pressure on your weekends. And I don't know what, you know, holidays, who knows, families, right? Those types of things. I'd rather not put as much pressure on, as board members, right? On, on you on the weekend and, and see if we can't have those due on the 3rd, which I think is within our purview to dictate that timeline, right Maggie? And then, and you know, even part of this message is, is us having this conversation helps get that word out. But if, yeah, if we move that, that timeline up to the 3rd, that gives you the 4th and the 5th to, to do some evaluation. And I'd ask by, you know, 4 o'clock on the 5th that those are, I don't know, submitted to Angie or, I don't know how, you know, have to figure out how that plays out. I want to be cautious of my role in this process and not, I'm happy to support, but know that I'm a non-voting member. How's that sound? As I don't, you don't, I'm not sure you should or shouldn't pick your boss, right? So.
Yeah, I'm very amendable to moving that date up to the 3rd. And, and I think some of these details will become more self-evident as we proceed through the process. But I think we have now given the public and ourselves a, a framework here that seems to make sense.
Thank you. Is there a second to his motion?
A second.
Ah, good.
Any further discussion?
I just want to make clear, just understanding, so on our website, there'll be the application that we read through.
Mm-hmm.
And in the next day or two or, I don't know how long it takes.
Yeah, that's why, so from a, viewers and, and people here in the audience, this is all pretty live conversation. This is fresh and so therefore you're seeing, you could see the work in action here. Jill's really skilled that website work, so.
Okay. So you have announcement up on the website and you'll also reach out to our media partners? Yep, okay. Yep. Okay. Great, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to communication items.
I might need a health, I'm going to step outside for a minute and if you want to, can we come back to me and do a board report?
Yeah, let's do board reports then. So Tracy, can I start with you for board member reports?
I feel kind of odd starting because Sean's not here. I guess I'd like to start out with thanking Liz for her service for the past few months to the district. And then the next thing I have is I wanted to remind everybody that the Fall Musical at the high school is this weekend and they'll be presenting Alice by Heart. It runs November 20th through the 22nd. There's all sorts of different showtimes. You can look it up on their Facebook page and I have that written down here. It's the Alexandria area high school theater department Facebook page. You can also, there's a link for tickets there too. And it looks like a very intriguing story. It debuted on Broadway in 2012, so it's relatively new. And it takes place in London during World War II. And it's about a bunch of kids and a retelling of Alice in Wonderland. So it sounds really great.
So shows are Thursday, Friday, Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 2:00.
Yep.
Thank you. Maureen?
Thank you for that reminder. We had a student connections time with seniors, maybe two weeks ago. And so we get to ask questions and get all their input and ideas on how things are at the high school. We had quite a bit of conversation with them about their desire to have core classes have less time spent doing individual work on a computer and more things that would be project-based. And even the idea of having group assessment work done, which is used in universities in different ways as well, rather than just traditional testing. I see some agreement in the, from seniors in the back. And so that was, they had a lot of thoughts and ideas on that. And I think it was insightful. And Mr. Duenhaugre, the principal, was taking some thoughts and feedbacks for consideration on how that can really help for even just integrity of learning, students' interest in learning, so they're not just trying to memorize to get a grade on a test, but having more complex thought and knowledge and understanding shared in the assessment process. So, so that was neat, it was a good time. I thought I'd also share update that we had a board work session recently as well that talked about long-term facilities management and the cost. Statewide, I think all districts would agree that the cost of maintaining buildings is higher than the funds that we receive from taxpayers to do so, which creates challenges and a lot of management that's needed as well as the ongoing care. So we had two companies present about potentials of their system support and had a custodial staff there as well for their feedback, which we thank them for their time. I think that was really great collaboration and ongoing understanding for how that might benefit our work. And we also discussed Title IXs as a board and not specific to our students or our programs of any specific issue, but would our board be interested in doing some advocacy, sending a letter to our state based on response to the federal regulations? And we didn't come to a specific agreement for our board, so we're not having any action moving forward at this point, but we did have some conversation on that topic as well, which was good to get to share thoughts on that. And I thought I'd share a little bit that while I mentioned I'm going to St. Paul on Wednesday, will be there through Thursday to do learning at the Capitol for how our state is making education decisions and policy work through our education policy fellowship. You know, I'm on the board for Lakes Country Service Cooperative and I had my board meeting this past Thursday. And I like to call her R. Darcy, but I know she's no longer R. Darcy. She's been hired by Lakes Country to be a global, what's, I don't remember her exact title. But anyway, to do global connections work. So creating opportunities for students to do trips abroad that are educational learning. And so she'll be helping coordinate that work and bringing those opportunities to the districts that Lakes Country serves, as well as creating opportunities for partnerships with other countries and their staff learning ongoing. And I think she'll be wonderful in that role and I think it's a cool opportunity for her. So I thought I'd let you know that. At our Lincoln parent meeting last week, Janine from our food service director presented about their goals for having scratch-made food and just continuing to have even more nutrients and healthy food choices for our students. And she brought this, kind of like a charcuterie board of fruits and, fruits and vegetables. Had pomegranates and dragon fruit and fennel. I think I was the only one that liked the fennel. But if you haven't eaten lunch at school this year, you'll notice that even they make their own ranch dressing now. And so you have a bottle, you squirt it rather than the packets that are purchased. So a lot of great plans and just a couple of year-out plans for continuing improvement there. I was at the buyout luncheon with Angie and Rick. So congrats to Masman with that. Had our ed foundation meeting. We have a new executive director starting in December, so that's exciting. And we're, we're ready for that port, continued growth and support. And I also just wanted to mention that I, I personally volunteer in a couple of different ways throughout the schools, but two of them are being Lunch Buddy program that's ran through community ed as well as junior grade books part of school. I'm pondering what if I'll do junior achievement this year since I'm having a baby, you know, a little bit before that. But I just wanted to share that because there's a lot of neat opportunities to get involved. And I think it's really important for families to get to be a part of the school day. Even today after I had met with my Lunch Buddy, I went to say hi to my second grader really quick and I'm sitting there eating my food as I wait for her to come finishing my meal. And this boy that, I don't specifically remember, comes up and says, oh, are you Stella's mom? You know, because they see me in the building. And I just love that connection and ongoing of getting to be engaged for my, for students overall, not just my own. So just wanted to invite the public just to know that there are many opportunities and I think a lot of needs and benefits for those social supports and positive adult interactions that support students.
All right, I'm going to make this quick for our superintendent here. And I just want to genuinely, genuinely thank you, Rick, for your extra work you've put in the last few months to try to pass the referendum and taking on the principal role on top of supervising our finances in this transition. And then, oh yeah, being your superintendent. So I, I do appreciate all that you do for our district. I got to participate in the Minnesota Youth Council. That's an organization that was created a few years ago with legislation. They pick four students from each of our congressional districts and then four at large. And they get together and they work on legislation. And they're trying to pass legislation that would require students to be put on school boards, which Brandon, Brayden, sorry Brayden. Brayden Cox invited us to go down and he knew that I was not in favor of their legislation, but he let me be on their panel anyways. And the students there were absolutely amazing and it was a really great experience. And then we had our, our community ed advisory committee, always a great meeting with community members. We talked about youth enrichment and I just wanted to bring up that there are opportunities there for our public too to teach. And I found out that they're paid and they're paid pretty well. And the commitment can vary from a single evening to, you know, a single evening over 10 weeks. So that's a pretty cool thing. And you can, they have classes that are looking for teachers like the younger kids robotics, Lego, Lego robotics. But if you have ideas to, to bring to community ed or to our community sewing, other things, they would love to have, have us talk with you. And that was it for me.
Thanks, Alan.
Okay, I, I'll start with the work session. I thought it was a very well worth our while. The information we gained and the ideas, I think will, will serve our district well going forward as we continue to find creative ways to maintain the facilities that we have. I was out in the hallway before the doors opened tonight and most of the Discovery students and parents were gathering. And it was just fun to be there amongst all that excitement and enthusiasm. And every time students come and present here, they do a marvelous job and we, we have a lot to be proud of. The ranch dressing is a big hit at Lincoln School. I hear that frequently. Okay, in fact, we had to go and buy ranch dressing to have in our house because the grandkids fell so much in love with ranch dressing at Lincoln School. Okay. One, one other, tonight has been a night where we've had lots of live thoughts and ideas, so I'm going to share this out. For the last two months, there's been a group, a small group of, of us that have been meeting and we're trying to address the, the needs for families and students to be able to access mental health services when they need it. We're learning that many times, private insurance companies are not in a position to cover those expenses because of high deductibles. And it puts the families in a very difficult situation. They know that there's a need, but there is not the financial dollars available to pay for those costs of services. So our goal long-term of this group, and it's still a work in progress, would be to develop a system where we could raise funds, kind of like the Dollars for Scholars program. And that those dollars could become available when a family or a student needs to access some mental health services, but otherwise have not the financial means to do that. So we're going to meet again early in Nov, early in December. And if anybody that's in the audience or listening is interested in being part of this group, I would ask them them to contact Maggie, and then Maggie and I will get the information to them so they could become part of our group. The name of the group is going to be SOX. So, they've come up with the name, and they're working on a logo. One of the classes in the high school is involved with helping design a logo and doing some of that work on, on our behalf, and on behalf of our students. So, that's all I got.
SOX, an acronym?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. We, we had to have another acronym. In the education world, you don't live a minute without an acronym. So, we're doing our part, okay?
Can I have one other, one other live thought? I won't be too long.
She's torturing you.
I'm part of our library building project for the Douglas County Library, and our Transition Center is doing some work to, for a goal and dream of having a Cardinal Kitchen that is special education or different, different ability individuals, our eighteen to twenty-two year old population, getting to work in a cafe and develop job skills and workforce development, while also serving that to the public in public space. And so, anyway, that's an ongoing conversation. Hopefully, I'm not too early in mentioning that publicly. Got to go ahead. But part of that process, and what's important, is having integration for people with disabilities with just the general public, and getting to continue those relationships and partnerships, social life outside of high school and beyond. And so, I was thinking about the Unified Club presentation and Unified Advisors. And for myself, I didn't actually have much interaction with individuals with disabilities until I was a young finance career person in my twenties. I was invited through Conneagra Foods to be a tennis coach for Special Olympics. And this was in Minneapolis, so we'd go meet at a park, and I had little tennis experience, but enough that I can, could be helpful and throw a ball accurately and things like that. And it was wonderful, opportunity to be a coach through Special Olympics. And so, I just love the fact that not only are we creating greater integration of community and friendship for students at younger ages, to have awareness of career potential, but also even leadership skills and teaching, teaching thought, communication skills for those students who are in the mentor roles as well. I think, you know, those opportunities throughout a variety of unified classes really bring those for our students. And I think that's, just makes me super happy for our young people.
Thank you. No, great, great thoughts. I appreciate you talking about student connections as well, because I think that we had one of the smaller groups, but I think that we all left kind of thinking that there was this great discussion, and just the advocacy of the students looking at those, the group work, right? I mean, really looking at how the real world works too, in that, you know, there's so much collaboration that happens. And it was just, the maturity was, it was, it was just great discussion there. Both of you addressed our special work session that we had. So, I'm not going to touch on that anymore. But I also attended the Minnesota Youth Council meeting. I attended online. I thought that the students there really had a great case for student representatives to be on our school board. Actually, a hundred and thirty-four of the three hundred and thirty-one districts in Minnesota have student representation on a board. And so, I think that I would encourage you to look into it. And I know that Sean has attended some meetings related to that, just with interest. But there's, they're looking at proposing some legislation, as Laura said. But really, it's bringing their lived experience to the table, opening up communication, really learning decision-making, leadership. It's also going to, it also brings some opportunity for them as far as just that civic responsibility, right? We talked a little bit about CACR and civic responsibility, and I just think that that just presents some opportunity. One of the points that they had too is that their, their age group is the highest as far as participation in volunteering. So, twenty-eight percent of their age group volunteers. And I think that, you know, I mean, if you can get people engaged in opportunities, and we have lots of opportunities of ways for students to serve, but I think that, I think to have us give some consideration to having some students serve on our board. So, today at the Champion Meeting, we talked about the Minnesota Career and Technical Education Summit, that actually our previous academy coach, Claire Anderson, as well as our current coach, Shannon Patience, were able to attend last week. And they did a presentation, but they also got to attend some sessions as well, and really felt that we, as a district, are doing really well. There, we're ahead of the curve, where most districts are at. We have much more opportunities for our kids, and a lot of that is because we have an academy coach position, right? I mean, that's a position that's not often one of those things that's in other districts, as well as our partnership with the AEDC, so Economic Development. And I would argue too, that we have businesses in this community that support our kids so well. You know, Shannon and Claire can both talk about how they can call up a business and say, "This is what we need," and businesses are willing to say, "How can I make it work?" And I just think that that's such a testament to what we have going on here, that, you know, those career and technical jobs are always going to be needed. We're always going to need kids to do those. And so, it's great to find pathways and ways for kids to have those opportunities. So, it was exciting to hear that we are ahead of the curve with those opportunities for kids. I also heard from some Rotary members that we had some DECA students present over there. So, they were talking about Habitat, and just did, I think that, that the Rotary members were just kind of blown away by their presentation skills. So, I just want to call out Dave, Amaya, and Brooke, that, that were out there and did that presentation. They, they impressed some, some of our community members. So, and you were there, I'm sure, right?
I was, I was not there that day.
You were not there, okay. Well, I heard it was wonderful.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Other than our next meeting, I'm going to let you cover that, I guess.
So, just, and I'll try to be brief, because clearly I'm working on, I got to go home and go to bed. Veterans Day, just awesome. I was at Carlos. I know board members, you got some videos. Just a great, a great chance to honor people who are serving or have served in our armed forces. I think we have fall activities now, I think have concluded winter, last winter, or our winter ones are all, are starting up, so that transition's in place. A bunch of holiday meal pieces happening this week. Janine mentioned her sort of working on that at different schools. Students finished the first quarter, correct, onto the second quarter, so a fresh start in some cases, which is, I don't know if that's good or bad, but that transition. And then our Fall Musical, I don't know if anybody touched on Fall Musical?
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you, Tracy. Live United Luncheon coming up on Wednesday. I know Jesse, board member at United Way, right? Is that Wednesday this week, I think? Yeah. And, and know that our students and families benefit from some of the, the food packing that happens. And, and good. You mentioned Champions Committee. Transportation, we've had a couple drivers apply, which is great. Frustration, can't take the test until X number of weeks later because of backlog of testing or lack of spots. So, we'll continue to recruit there. Again, another great opportunity to serve kids. Maureen, you touched on LGCC, I think, a little bit with the library piece, and continue to navigate that with our city and county. Student connections, super powerful. Tuesday, April seventh is the date you want to put in your calendar. So, I believe that's the late start. There you go. Board work session, I know Mitch, thanks for your presence. Mitch is back there as well as, and just good to have that input and that knowledge be broadened. We'll bring some of those options back to our board committees in December and make a decision if we're going to act now or in the future. But I know we'll start our Capital Projects site visits here, so I'll have a chance to walk through each building with principals and head custodians, and we'll have to do some prioritization with that. Continue to try to find a legislative roundtable option. I think the date that we looked at was, I know Maggie had sent out communication. I just found out, I think that's going to be, there might be a Republican caucus meeting at that same time, which clearly for our region would have an impact in attendance. So, we'll continue to see if we can land a date that, that might work for our regional legislative partners. But I think one was, I know Michelle Fishbach was just here, and then there was another event. And so, we've tried to kind of find dates, and we might get bumped again, which is, we'll see. We'll have to go back to the drawing board and work on some of that. But that work continues in the, in the background. And then Capital Projects Levy, really just want to say thanks to the board for having the courage to go to the community and ask. Feels like this is like Kevin O'Connell lost to the Vikings game, post-game press conference kind of situation, that got to go back to the drawing board and see what, what went well, what didn't go well. We need to collect some data yet on, on some of that work. It's great. Trish, let me get some feedback from our curriculum advisory council, so thanks for that opportunity, and see where that goes. But know that our budget planning for twenty-six, twenty-seven will really heat up in December. And you'll also notice, if, if I did run home quick and have a piece of toast, and found my truth in taxation meeting statement, and I think people will notice that there was a, a decrease in their school taxes. And so, again, I think as we continue to be efficient with our taxpayer dollars, and hopefully people get a chance to see that as they get their truth in taxation meeting statements that are in mailboxes today. And I think that's a good segue into the next meeting, which we have a super lengthy agenda. And do you want to, do you want me to talk about this? Do you want to talk about that?
So, we, we're planning on starting at five thirty, right? We all agreed to that. The truth in taxation meeting happens at seven. So, we will start our board meeting at five thirty, and then we will switch to the truth in taxation at seven, just to obviously be accountable to that meeting time. And then we'll finish up our work after that. So, just because the, the agenda is quite lengthy, and typically that night brings us to about the ten o'clock hour anyway. So, it'd be good to start a little earlier.
Will the carolers come closer to seven or five thirty?
Ooh, Maggie's working on that.
Okay.
Okay, good. We usually like to start with the carolers, so it'd be great if we could, it's always a great way to start. That's it for me.
So, December fifteenth, earliest third Monday that, that can come, but that'll be our next meeting. Have a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Thank you. Meetings adjourned. Thank you.